Please rise for the place of allegiance. Our recreation supervisor, Jaime Ricardo Lujanes this evening.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here.
Councilor Lawrence?
Here.
Councilor Chleba?
Here.
Councilor Martinez?
Here.
Mayor Garcia?
Here.
Next item on the agenda is the approval of the consent agenda.
I approve the consent agenda.
Second. The other discussion. The round up. Councilor Lawrence?
Aye.
Councilor Chleba?
Aye.
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Councilor Schrader?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Moving on to proclamations, communications, and appointments, we have some further discussion on our August 8 workshop. And with that, we turn it over to City Manager Forrest Cooper.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councilors. So included in your packet is a memo basically that kind of recounts a little bit from the August 8 council workshop where the issue of marijuana in our community was discussed. And from that workshop, the council indicated the desire to have further discussions tonight. It's not a public hearing, but it's an opportunity, there were a couple council members who were absent for you all to discuss that. In the memo, it also goes back and discussed essentially the four options that the city attorney had laid out for the council, including take no action, amend the current ordinance, and mob opt-in, prefer the issues of the city electorate, or take no action and allow the promoters of this idea to use the referendum process. So essentially, it's up for the council to have a discussion, to take whichever testimony you'd like to tonight, or just have a discussion amongst yourselves. Obviously, you have a large crowd in attendance, which I'm guessing is interested in the issue.
So I guess we'll just kind of run this like a comment portion. If there's anyone here this evening that didn't necessarily come to the workshop would like to say a few words, we'll try and keep it to a very limited time since there are so many people here this evening. Do you want to just put our city by this state grenade?
Beverly Vitale, and I represent a Lutheran school. This is written by our head teacher, Kristen Ruckey. It has come to my attention that Mr. Gaegeles is questioning the legal number of days our school is in session. I do not wish to attack Mr. Gaegeles, but only defend our school. We have always followed the School of Colorado K-12 mandate from the Department of Education, which is 968 hours per school year. We exceeded this with over 1,000 hours of instruction. However, Title 22, Education, Article 33, from the Department of Education website, requires 172 days of basic academic education for independent or local schools. As this information seems to be contrary, I called Colorado Department of Education and spoke with Renee Martinez, who specializes in dealing with private schools in Colorado. She said that we could follow either 968 hours or 172 days, depending on what our school board thought was best for the students at our school, and depending on the local public school's district requirements. I called the superintendent of the Montavista Public Schools and was told that they were not concerned whether we followed 968 hours or 172 days of instruction. What they were more concerned about was whether students would be academically ready for high school. Since our school graduates students who are mostly at or above grade level, this does not constitute a problem. Several of our students who recently graduated from area public high schools with a four-point grade average. Some of them have received tens of thousands of scholarship dollars this year alone. Most high schools are very pleased with the students we send them. They are active in athletics, music, and community service organizations such as National Honor Society, Heat Club, and Civil Air Control. Even though we don't need to do this, we have amended our school calendar to include 173 days of instruction for the current and future academic years. Our school is complying with state law and has operated as a positive influence in our community for decades. Please be aware that our school serves our community in many ways, including trips to home like to visit veterans. I feel our school is important to the community of Montavista and its needs, and its needs should be considered in making this decision. And there was a question about whether the school was legal or not, and that's why Kristen wrote this.
Mr. Gaegeles?
Just two contradictors. I didn't say that it wasn't, I just said that it wasn't a legal public school recognized by the state of Colorado or any district or municipality. It's just a private school is all it was saying.
It just considered it.
Yeah, and there just is a difference between a public and a private school. Any money obtained by any of these, these taxes wouldn't even go to them because they are a private school and not a public school. Thank you.
And can I ask this, do we have a right to speak?
I'm Bob Gailey, just a citizen. I'd like to speak against considering doing this in our city. In a June DEA report, the Denver Division talks about these operations being harm communities, including residents, first responders, service providers, the environment in multiple ways, from reduced quality of life to reduced property values, physical harms from mold fire, even explosions. This is from Barbara Carey, you know, spokesperson for the DEA. She goes on to say, "When you add the home situated butane hash oil labs to the mix, residential marijuana grow and processing operations truly do have the impact on neighborhoods similar to that of a home-based clandestine meth labs." The conclusion of the report said, "The proliferation of large residential growth grows and is taxing police and fire departments, consumer power, and water resources, and potentially affects home values in the community throughout the state." Couple of other quotes or statistics I'd like to bring up. This quote, "Students who smoke marijuana have twice the odds of being high school dropouts, have trouble finding jobs, get involved in gangs and crime, and end up on welfare. Eighty percent of prisoners are high school dropouts. Curbing the nation's dropout rate is oppressing economic and social imperative of the state. The stakes are too high for our children, our economy, and our country." President Barack Obama. Another quote, "The evidence is overwhelming that marijuana is a dangerous drug." This is from Joseph Calafino, Junior National Center on Addiction and Substance Abuse, Chairman President, former Secretary of State, or Secretary of Health, Education, and Welfare. He writes, "Parents should recognize and help children to recognize that playing with marijuana is like playing with fire. More kids are treated in marijuana-dependent abuse than ever before, and marijuana is the culprit in increasing proportion of emergency room visits. Moreover, the CASA latest analysis provides increased evidence that marijuana is a gateway drug. More researchers, as more researchers study the drug, the consequences of its use are clearly become the teens who smoke pot are playing a dangerous game of Russian roulette, not engaging in a harmless rite of passage." And then finally, the report from National Survey on Drug Use and Health was updated on the marijuana use in Colorado, and it was added to the publication. The publication was Legalization of Marijuana in Colorado: The Impact, Volume Three. Says latest results in youth ages 12 to 17 years old. In the two years' average since Colorado legalized recreational marijuana, shows marijuana use increased 20% compared to the two years prior average, or the two years' average prior to legalization. Nationally, youth marijuana has declined 4% during the same time. Results show Colorado's youth ranked number one in the nation for marijuana use. And then I'd like to add that Alaska marijuana use was illegal, and then it became legal from 1978 to 1994, and then it became illegal again. And the reason it went back that way that it did was because of the devastating effect that it had on the youth. This valley already has a problem with drugs, and our youth don't need another avenue to make things worse. Thank you.
Perhaps just maybe a little clarification for someone who got warrants at the work session. Mr. Gaegeles is just proposing a retail facility, he's not proposing to grow, or we don't have anyone before council at the current time proposing to grow this. So the issue I had is the, are we telling our... Is there anyone else?
My name is Kathy Reynolds, and I did get to speak at last meeting, but I think there were some questions about the data that I presented, and one of that was a survey that was, or article that was posted in the Denver Post, and it was Healthy Kids Colorado Survey. Someone who found that data, and it was very curious, that particular report divided the state into 21 regions, and those are based on county school districts or school districts per county. In that report, and I have this to give you for us, this is actually the data that Healthy Kids Colorado used. Of the 21 regions, 10 regions reported increases in marijuana use ages up to 17, and those increases ranged from 2.6% to a high of 37.8%. The decreases that they said made marijuana flat, there were only seven regions that posted decreases, or seven districts, seven zones, regions, I'm sorry, that reported decreases, and those ranged from 1.9% decrease to 34.5. The interesting thing from that data, it was that three of the largest school districts in Colorado opted out of that survey. So Jefferson County did not participate. Weld County, Northern Colorado, did not participate. El Paso County, which is Colorado Springs, did not participate, and Douglas County also did not participate in that survey. And that was the information that Healthy Kids Colorado used to say that marijuana use in Colorado was flat. The other thing interesting that I found was that they asked where children, where did these young people, were getting their marijuana. So in the same survey, when students were asked where they were getting their marijuana, 18% said on the black market, 82% cited friends who get it illegally, family members, or actually they purchased it illegally from the marijuana businesses themselves. I also heard and contacted Sierra Grande School District last year alone because of the three or four marijuana stores in Port Harland. The school district at Sierra Grande had to hire a, what they called a "school health advocate," because when they opened school in the fall last year, they were faced with 40 homeless students that came into Sierra Grande. Their school district size is about 250. So 40 homeless students came in, this person was charged with a finding clothing for these children that was clean because they are living homeless, they are living in fertilizer tanks in the prairie south of Blakenford, Harland. They have no water, they have no sewer, they have no food. So this school health advocate was put in charge making sure that when those school children came to school in the morning, they had to go to the locker rooms and take showers. They had to find clothes, clean clothes that these children could wear, they had to leave them in their lockers at night, so they had clean clothes in the morning when they came back to school. They had to make sure that they have, that they have food to eat, and that they are healthy, that they're seeing a physician and having their basic needs met, because the parents are not, because they're only interested in marijuana that they can purchase in those stores. If that's what you guys want to give to Montavista, you have the right, but I think it's wrong. My grandmother was born here in 1896, and this will be one of the worst things you've ever done for Montavista.
Hi. My name is Sherdica Gaegeles. Hello, everybody. My name is Sherdica Gaegeles, and I am writing you this letter today to present some facts about marijuana industry. You can find on the Denver Post Cannabis News by Ricardo Baca that Colorado marijuana sold nearly 600 million in recreational and medical cannabis in the first half of 2016. The total for 2015 was 996 million, nearly $1 billion is expected to reach in 2016. You can also find on the Colorado Legislative Council Issue Brief 1510, which is right in front of you, that when voters approved retail marijuana, legislation decided that the first 40 million would go to the BEST fund, Building Better Schools Today. The BEST fund is used to renew and replace deteriorating public schools. Any tax revenue that exceeds 40 million is collected and used for the MTCEF fund, Marijuana Tax Cash Fund, which is used for healthcare, health education, substance abuse prevention, treatment programs, and law enforcement. The tax revenue is also used for programs like TGYS, Tony Graham's Youth Service Program, to reduce youth crime and violence, and to prevent child abuse and neglect, found on the Colorado Department of Public Environment, TGYS, which is on the third page, I believe, of the pamphlet that you have. In the Colorado Legislative Council Issue Brief 1510, Table 2, "The Distribution of Governor's Office," "The distribution of marijuana tax revenue is distributed between the Department of Education, the Governor's Office, the Department of Healthcare, the Department of Law, the Department of Public Health, and the Department of Revenue, all of which are designed by our government to protect our kids and provide better schools, education, and more law enforcement. Since the first marijuana shop opened on January 1st, 2014, the state of Colorado has benefited from a decrease in crime, a decrease in traffic facilities, fatalities, excuse me, an increase on tax revenue and economic output, and retail marijuana stores, and an increase in jobs. I can only hope that you take a minute to go through the facts and to reflect on how this benefits our children and our community, really. Thank you for your time."
I don't have a prepared statement, but knowing that this has been coming up, I have kids that are in St. Peters. I absolutely cannot believe that you guys would consider putting a pot shop that close to a church or to a school. To me, that is absolutely unacceptable. I don't even know how you could consider doing that. I know that a lot of people think that this is going to bring in a lot of money for the community, you're going to get all these taxes, we're going to get all this great stuff for our schools. It doesn't happen. I talked to people that I know along the front range that are in small communities, Nantucket Springs, West Cliff, and somewhere else, and they were telling me today that their towns have gone to absolute hell in a handbasket. They stink, they smell like spunks, there's people walking around like zombies everywhere, no shirts, no shoes on. Crime has gone up, and you guys want to consider doing that to our community? It's crazy. I mean, we have enough problems with drugs in this town right now without opening a marijuana shop that is going to bring more people in. Let's go buy some pot, yeah. Screw going to school, forget going to work, we're going to go buy some cheap land out somewhere, we're going to start rolling pot on it because they got legal in Montavista. So I'm very passionate about this, and I'm very overwhelmed that knowing the problems that we have in this community with drugs, bad drugs, that we would even consider putting another level of access. It floors me, and I would really hope that you guys would consider shelving this. I mean, you need to listen to the community, you need to listen to the people that are paying the taxes. I'm a homeowner, I live here, I pay taxes to the school, I pay taxes to Safeway, I pay taxes everywhere. I do not want my tax money in any shape or way or form to be associated with a marijuana shop. And if you guys think you're going to get a lot of money out of this, you're not, because everybody that I've talked to that are teachers in schools where they have legalized marijuana says they have not seen one dying, that 90% of that money is going to the administration costs and administering the marijuana industry. It's not going to our schools, it's not going to our communities. I thought when that was voted in that this is going to be awesome, our schools, we're going to get this great big boost. Has anybody seen any of this money? I mean, really? Has the police department gotten any extra money? I don't think our schools have gotten any extra money. I don't know if the city council, if you guys know of any extra money coming in. So I would just ask that you please consider the community when you're making your decision on this, because you've got one person here in front of, for it, you've got an entire room against it. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
You want proof of the money that it brings? This is a picture of the new Aunt Nido High School. If you've ever passed by Aunt Nido, I lived 15 miles from there, that school was in ruins three years ago. I encourage you guys to pass this picture around after I pass it to them. This is proof, the money is going somewhere. It's not invisible money or nothing like that. I present today to this council only facts. I brought info packets to share with you and some members who are interested. Please know all have distinct bona fide origins from the state of Colorado. I own my property for 10 years, paid my taxes, sales taxes, licensing fees, expensive water bills, not to mention I made tax revenue for you, my city, for 10 years. This is my land, let me use it as I see fit to operate a legitimate business that will make as much tax revenue as 10 businesses combined. The opportunity is here, and I'm the man for the job. I encourage you to read these facts. Our schools and our police deserve this money. Montavista Police Department works hard, and I see them every day doing an outstanding job. For our schools, better facilities, upgrades on everything, resources, you name it, all public schools will get a big piece. I realize that there are those who oppose, but they don't know all the facts, and most don't want to read them. Along with them, all the illegal cannabis dealers making good money off of moldy, homegrown weed. Please have an open mind and give me a proper work session so my proposal can be heard. Thank you.
My name's Alan, I'd just like to stand at the boat having a marijuana facility in our town. We've got one six miles east, it's easily accessible, people do all their shopping in, pretty much in almost any way. If you've got the money to buy it, you've got the money to travel out there. As far as the tax revenue goes, what's more important? Our children and our families or money? And I think our children and our families are much more important than the money and the revenue that this could bring.
Good evening. My name is Dave Lefford. My wife and I have lived about 500 feet south of the proposed facility, definitely against it. We are very passionate about Montavista. We like the quiet, loving community that we have, and I think it would be a huge mistake to allow this to come into our fair town.
Madam Mayor, I've been here for going on 18 years. I've seen this town, and I have a son who is in law enforcement. He's worked undercover in drugs. They say marijuana is not a bad drug. People who start with marijuana, it doesn't do any good, they go higher. I've worked for the schools before I became into the ministry. I've talked to people, teachers that are in schools now. All this money, a billion dollars that the state has got, the schools are still struggling. So this marijuana thing is so great, why are the schools still struggling? Why are the police departments struggling? Because the administration and the state administration stuff cannot come up with what, how much marijuana a person has to have in order to be under the influence in driving. They finally got them with alcohol. We get marijuana, and it's not going to go where the kids can, can't get it because they have to be a certain age. Look at the alcohol that is being consumed. Look at the registered raps that are being consumed. You get, you get some adult to go and get it, give it to the kids. I don't want to see kids from high school on down to preschool. You get the registered marijuana, and then you get the candy, which is, and it's been told that you don't eat the whole piece of candy, but only a small portion of it. Do we want to have a lot of our kids in ER or drug overdose because of the marijuana or the marijuana laced candy? I've done a checkup now at the hospital. I've seen what happened to people under the influence. I've seen it here in Montavista, talked to some of these officers, I did ride-alongs with them. You see people under the influence. Is this what we want to give our community? Or do we want to have a safe community? That's what I'd like the council to think.
Can I make one more comment? I'd like to just make one more comment. I had a son that got into drugs. He started in high school, junior high with marijuana, and he graduated clear up into crack cocaine, spent two years in prison because he couldn't get off of it. It's devastating. It absolutely devastates your family, because they steal from you, they do everything they can to get the drugs. We don't need that here. We don't need any more access than we already have.
Of the four options that I heard before you, I'd like to propose a fifth, invest to affirm that we've got, and say that we don't want marijuana in our town.
I've been listening to all of you today, and all I would like to say is just ask the law enforcement here today, people are already walking around like zombies at night. They're in the lower communities, doing drugs, it's already here. If we legalize it, then it will be under the microscope and under the government's eye so that they can watch it and maybe improve things. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
I'm Samuel Lorenz, and I would just like to say what has the United States government I'm Samuel Lorenz, and I would just like to say what has the United States government done? It's already illegal in the United States, so what has the federal government done to stop this? Nothing.
I'm Merrick Lorenz. I'm a student at St. Peters. Look at this. The facts are, you already have drug problems, you already have a fire. If you're gonna light another one, which is basically like allowing marijuana, you're gonna have a wildfire.
I'm Tammy David. I'm a teacher at St. Peters, and Mr. Gallegos mentioned that St. Peters would not be eligible for any of the tax spending. That is not what we are concerned about. We are concerned about the proximity and the safety issue of St. Peters, which is around three hundred fifty feet from the property where Mr. Gallegos would want to put his installation in. And there is nothing between St. Peters and the property. So even though he is not going to be keeping money on hand, the general community doesn't know that. Somebody driving through is gonna go, oh, wow, there's cash, let's rob it, and we're in the crossroad. That is what I'm concerned about. We are, they recommend that there is a thousand-foot distance between a facility and a school, and I would like you to consider that. And it doesn't matter if it's public or private. Sorry.
Yes, it does. Yes, it does.
I spoke at last week's meeting. There has been on Channel Nine News, a program with where does the money go from drugs? And members have said the money is going for police, for enforcement, for administrative, for everything else but what they had said it should go for. And it may put a roof on a school, or it may do something minor like that. Doesn't do anything what they said it would do. One point three percent of that money is available, which is nothing compared to the budget of this state. And may I remind you, it does not matter whether it is legal or if it is under the table. It is a drug. And drugs have never benefited society or civilization of any time. Thank you.
Can I make a motion to reform our status as an opt-out candidate?
No second motion, guys.
You have got to.
Seriously?
I can't believe you.
What is the matter with you?
You money is more important.
Have some respect.
Excuse me. Excuse me. Oh, my gosh.
There has been no decision made. I would like to discuss the matter before any decision is made. I don't think there was a motion on the floor to approve marijuana, to approve the facility. I want to have my chance to at least discuss the options and discuss what's available. We afforded you guys the opportunity to speak on your feelings both pro and against. I would also like my opportunity to discuss how to handle this and what's the best approach.
It's a shame you weren't here for the workshop last week.
Here's where I, and I would like for the rest of you to try to understand this. Of the four options, if we were to continue with our opt-out stance, Mr. Gallegos could circulate a petition and get enough signatures to put it on the ballot with his wording, the way he chooses. If we vote to... So we have another option where we could refer this for further planning and zoning, where we set, as a municipality, we set the criteria of where we would allow this, what the application fees, what the taxation would be. So do we want to put ourselves in a position where we are giving all the control of this municipality to a petitioner? Or would we like to retain that control and plan when and where and how much it would be allowed? That's where I'm at.
Gene, we would still be in the licensing authority, even if we were to refer them through and if we become an opt-in, correct? So we would be able to still control where, through special use permits where...
Well, you know, if this should, first of all, if this should go to a ballot, then it's a yes or no type of situation on the ballot. So you've got to, I suppose you'd have to put some faith in the electorate about the decision there. If the matter should pass that you would allow retail stores, then there are a whole host of regulations that you would end up adopting about the operation and how it's conducted. So that's, that's the way that that goes.
So we would still be in charge of the regulations?
You'd still be in charge of the regulations, certainly.
But we can still set where he plans and how.
Well, yeah, but if he petitions it, if we remain opt-out and he petitions it, he doesn't have to include any taxation question on the ballot in his wording, correct?
That's correct, even though the town could refer a taxation measure itself to the electorate if he did that.
Well, and I guess the bigger question then is, so you said that we would adopt policy. Now, is that, so if you say it passed, would then it automatically trigger just the normal, what's on the books now with the state policy on this? Would that automatically happen? Or would we have the opportunity then to adopt our own?
You would adopt your own. You would adopt your, your specific regulations about distances, times of sale, the number of outlets and all of that type of thing. You would adopt.
So we would still have control, assuming that it would pass, which given without pricing, I don't think it's in the past.
But there's, and there is also the issue that, you know, you would be spending a certain amount of tax payers' money to host an election on that issue also. So that's a, that's a consideration. I don't know whether anybody's estimated what that costs, but I've heard two or three thousand dollars or something like that in the past.
It'll be between six and seven.
How much?
Six and seven thousand.
Between six and seven thousand dollars, clerk says. So that, that is an issue that you would have to consider. And I think you would also have to consider considering the sentiment about how, you know, that election may turn out and whether the, you know, whether the cost of the election would be worthwhile proposing that to the electorate.
But if we were to, because if it's not Mr. Gallegos today, it could be somebody else tomorrow and somebody else next week. If we don't sit down and plan this first, right, and make up our criteria and the application fees, if, if the Planning and Zoning Commission were to set application fees and whatnot, that would cover any expenses or ballot questions?
Where would that come from? Where would that money come from?
It would come from the person proposing the facility.
All my license.
Send an application fee.
But they can't apply until after the election is over, then?
What the mayor's trying to say is that we would be recouping the costs of that election through application.
We could do that just the same way. We could go out and spend our money upfront, and we don't know if he can even get the petitioner.
So I guess my word, I guess the way I look at this, Councilor Lorenz, is that I'm a big fan of doing things the way that our founding fathers had intended to do things, and that is letting the public decide whether or not they want it. I would, I heard what the people have said, and I've heard the passionate responses here tonight. And so my thinking is, is let's ask the people of the town, do they want it or do they not want it? And if they don't want it, then we've, then we've gone past this whole thing that we have here tonight, and the people are saying no. That's, that's the thing that I would like to put out there, is let's let the people of this town decide. Didn't we decide?
Yeah. I wonder, we already voted on that?
No.
As a county and as a city, or just as a county?
So, Councilor Schleib, in respect to our founding fathers, they set up a representative republic, which is the electorate of those lawmakers to set the law, correct? That's our job. We've been elected to set the laws. If you're not willing to take a stand on it, that's your choice. I'm willing to take a stand.
What is not being understood here is if we continue to opt out, Mr. Gallegos can collect signatures and force it to the ballot issue.
Yes.
And then he would be in control of the question and the taxing amount, but if we...
Put it out to the vote.
Then we're in control of the process. And like the mayor said, it's Mr. Gallegos today, Mr. Smith next week, Mr. Jones.
No, we were told it was every two years.
Whenever you want. They can petition when they want, correct?
I think there's nothing that keeps us from coming back on you in subsequent years, even though it's voted down in one year. And I'd add here that, you know, as far as, and trying to project votes is very, very difficult, but, and I have one municipality that I've seen how this goes in, which is Southwood. Almost the same number of people who were represented at the meeting like this up there, the vote went almost exactly the same way when it came to the ballot issue. They were able to get enough signatures to get the matter on the ballot, but the public voted that down in almost the same. So, you know, does that come back year after year? It may at some point, but at the same time, if, if you, if you determine not to send it out to the ballot and on your own language, and if the petitioners or if the proponents decide, do decide to go to a ballot, that's something that they're gonna have to consider is how, given the sentiment in this room, how that election is going to turn out. I can't predict what they would do about that, but that's certainly a consideration for the proponents before they go and start collecting signatures for a ballot.
Who would pay for the election if Mr. Gallegos were to...
We're probably gonna end up paying the election one way or the other.
I have a question. How did the town opt out to begin with?
By vote of the council.
Yeah. When Colorado first passed the marijuana, what's amendment sixty-two? Sixty-nine.
Amendment twenty, first of all, on medical, and then amendment sixty-four on other forms of marijuana.
So they gave each municipality the option to opt in or opt out. We opted out, so we thought how it kind of all started laying out. But I guess what I'm trying to say is, if we think this is gonna go away, it's not. Southwood dealt with it a year ago. Delmore's dealing with it right now. Alamos is dealing with it right now. Montevista's dealing with it right now. So this is not an issue that's gonna go away. It's not gonna go away with one person. We're gonna see more and more people coming before us requesting this. So that's, again, I'll go back to my stance of where I feel that we need to say this is not gonna go away, and this is an issue we have to deal with. Let's sit down and look at our community, where, if and when if the voters pass it, I'm with Mr. Schleba, it would go before the people. But where would we even allow this to be? How would we tax it? How would we have application fees to cover any expenses, increase costs? I would rather remain in control and have control over those questions and those fees and, and the logistics of where this would even happen.
And we can still have control of the logistics of the tax question, which we could add as soon as it goes through. Are we gonna have a vote every time it's put to the board? Because if it goes through this, if we put it up and it fails, he can still come up in a year and do the same thing he can. I would rather take care of it today as best as we can and avoid spending six, eight thousand dollars until he is, until whatever opponent comes through with a signature to show that there is a support for it. Otherwise, we're wasting taxpayers' money to throw it out until we have some reasonable request. As it is, this facility will be allowed anyway because it's within a thousand feet of a school.
Well, I think the bigger, I, I think the more pressing issue right now is the basic fact of allowing it within the city limits or not, and that is...
Where do you stand?
Well, yeah, I gotta get to Councilor Lorenz.
Let's see if you can.
Okay. So in that, in that instance, the question at hand is whether or not we should allow marijuana within city limits in Montevista. That is question number one before we can even really get to the question of approving a license or anything of that sort, or a recreational, medical, any sort of operation facility within the city, because right now there's been more and more. And my personal opinion, I've looked at this, and because there wasn't a vote of the people in the first place when it passed, or when, when the amendment passed in general, then realistically, the people didn't really have their, their voice either way. It was a representative government. My personal take on it is now, just like Councilor Schleib said, you guys are all out here, passionate, and you guys have your opinions, and, and there's, there's nothing wrong with pro or con. But the point is, is that if we can give it back to the citizens, the smallest form of government that there is, and allow the people to decide if it's true and it's representative of this room, then it may not pass. But you at least give it back to the citizens, the smallest form of government that we have, back to you guys. That way it's not five people up here deciding what's best for the community. We put it back on you, and we ask you, the citizens, to tell us what you want with, with the city, and not through work sessions, not with, you know, you know, lines of surveys, but the actual vote itself, to be able for you to say, you yourself, that this is what I want or I don't want with my community. And I believe that that is the best course of action.
Where do you stand, Pat? Where do you stand? What do you think?
I don't think it's obligated. He's saying that he's here to represent all of the community, not just the ones that are here tonight, and that he would like to hear the communities.
But I want to know where you're gonna stand. For your part or against it? I'm against it.
Well, and, and, you know, we hear you loud and clear, Councilor Lorenz, you understand that you're passionate about the issue. Once again, as I've said before, I'm here to represent everyone. I wanna know what the people want. I'm not here to say that my will, my way or the highway, nobody gets to say anything. This is a community. We need to stand together as a community, and we need to know what the people want.
We need to know where our community stands. You guys maybe need your stand or something?
That's what I make of it.
Well, I can tell you, we elected you. You are standing before us.
Was there an outcry when we opted out?
As much as there is an outcry when somebody's trying to force it...
As much as there's an outcry when somebody's trying to force it on us?
I mean, and we, the people, we have the choice, where if our representatives don't vote the way that we want, then we vote them out and get new representatives. So was there an outcry when there was the opt-out? Were people upset that we opted out? Or did, were they happy with the decision? Was there a recall of people on the council? I don't remember that.
I believe that the council's job is to represent the people, so thank you for taking that into consideration, because there probably are more people that are opted out. There probably are, to be honest, you know, but if we don't get the people's word and see what they want, all we have is the Lutheran church here today telling us what they want. Thank you.
I'm really confused about this whole setback thing. Is it or is it not legal to have this kind of business within 500 feet of a school? Whether or not he thinks it's a real school or not?
A public school, it's got to be a public school.
It's up to you guys, actually, and I would like to.
Our school is a school. It is recognized by the state. Our credits transfer to other places. I was speaking. Our credits transfer to any other school in this state. We are recognized in the state of Colorado as a school. We're not a pretend school. We don't have just a bunch of people walking around going, oh, I think I'm going to give you an A today. That's not how it works. There, it's a real school, there are real grades, and how on earth could you put this kind of a business within a school? You wouldn't do it at Marsh, you wouldn't do it at Metz, you wouldn't do it at the high school, but it's okay to do it to St. Peter's because somebody thinks we're not a real school.
It's not okay. You are a real school. We don't think of you that way, just to put that clear.
But this is, this is.
Nobody, nobody's saying, like, Mr. Councilor Martinez, that we're not up here saying yes or no.
No, but I, I want clarification on the setback. I want clarification on it. Is it a real thing? How far is it? Is it just us that's in consideration?
If you would let me answer the question, Madam Mayor, council members. So here's the deal in Colorado. When this was passed, the regulations the state made allow local control on distance between marijuana grow or sales or whatever from a school. You know, in my mind, there's no question that you guys are a school, but there is not a state piece of guidance that says, federal government says a thousand feet, drug-free school zones. Okay, that's the federal law. We have a strange thing here in Colorado where the government, the federal government is, federal government says marijuana is illegal, okay, but they've, they've chosen not to go there since the voters here made it legal. So there is not a set piece of distance. So I think part of what the mayor and some of the council members talked about earlier, from a regulatory basis, the, the city would create, would have to create regulations if this passed, that took that into account. There is some movement on the part of the U.S. Attorney's Office regarding the distances that they've started in the front range on medical marijuana. Not sure how that'll bleed over, but they're telling medical marijuana that they can't be within a thousand feet of a school, and they've sent letters to a whole bunch, well, forty-plus of these dispensaries. So, but it's an open question that the, the state gave local municipalities local control. So I hope that answers your question.
Yes, it does, thank you. So why are you going to consider it if he doesn't have a proper location? Or are you even going to consider letting it go to the ballot if it's in violation of federal law and they are enforcing it?
And would you like?
Because if it's not Mr. Guyagels today, it will be.
Nobody else has come with another location to propose.
And would you like, want to be put right down the block from where you lived for thirty-eight years? Do you want the kind of customers in your neighborhood roaming around? We don't.
So if you guys tabled, or not tabled, if you go back and you create the, the rules, the regulations, the setback, all the things that are needed to even consider that type of a business, how long would it take you to do that? Would that be six months or a year or?
Think how much would it cost?
The planning and zoning commission is designed, and it, it, that is exactly what they do. Maybe, maybe hopefully once a month, depending on if we make form or not, we are, we do need members on all of our boards in general, but that's what they're designed to do. So at least, well, I'll give you a prime example, that a man came forward and wanted to have chickens to be allowed within the city of Montevista, which they are currently. He wanted to change that code because it's the same as that, it's illegal right now. And so the planning and zoning commission had a look at that, look at the current zoning. Well, I, I'm saying it's illegal, just as marijuana right now is illegal.
But they're not.
But then, then I'm not comparing chickens to marijuana, I'm saying that the laws are there.
Well, you're not allowed chickens, but marijuana's alright.
But it can theoretically be done in thirty days, and if, if they set it down.
Let Councilor Martinez finish his statement. We've got a lot of people interrupting, a lot of other people.
No, I was just asking for clarification.
Right, and so we need, let's let it finish its statement, and then we can continue.
So either way, they looked at the zoning for that area and said, okay, well, where would it even be if we did choose to, to open it? The planning and zoning commission looked at the zoning, and then they opened it to a public hearing. They made a, they made a recommendation to council to keep the same laws on the votes or not, but at least they had the ability to say, if it were to happen, this is where we would like it and this is where we wouldn't like it. So that that way, at least if it did ever happen, because this is now the third or fourth time that this has come up, that they had the ability to, if it did pass, this is where we would like to have it and have some control over it, as opposed to no control over it. So, and, and that, I think, is what the mayor is saying, is to have the planning and zoning commission, which is already, that's what their purpose is, make that establishment and say, okay, if this were to pass, where would we put it? How would you regulate it? What would you do? Like, where are the, where are the areas that are absolutely like, no, this shouldn't be here? And where are the areas where we're like, okay, if it did happen, this is where we would, where we would put them? In kind of getting out in front of it, instead of being reactive with everything, if it did pass, because I'll be honest, if it did pass right now, we have no.
No controls, no.
We have nothing right now in regards to zoning, to, to, to taxing, to anything.
And how long would that process take? Like, say, say you guys decided that we're going to give it to our, our planning commission, and they're going to sit down and work on it. I mean, in a realistic sense, is that thirty days, six months, a year? I mean, that's got to be very involved to do that. And it would basically be shelved while they're in that process?
Well, I'm curious, why haven't our representatives, have you known this is coming? Why isn't this already been planned?
Because we, we tried, to be honest with you. I've met with other elected officials in this area, and, and when I first got elected three years ago, and they had asked me, do you want to work together to try to get out in front of this issue, to try to pre-plan this at this exact moment, to see what we can do, make sure that we're getting everything that we have? I saw, I had a meeting. I've been ready and willing and able to make sure that this, this happens so that this, so that in, so like tonight, we at least have something to bring to the table to tell you, like, this is what's going on.
Well, that's kind of sad, you've got three years and not done it.
Well, I'm not the only one that gets brought to the table, though, ma'am. I am one council member in the city of Montevista, so there's an entire county and an entire San Luis Valley that is willing and able to meet, and if they don't want to meet, I sure can't have a meeting by myself to do it, and I, and I'm, I'm ready, I'm willing. I wanted to do it. I wanted to kind of get out in front of this and have some sort of plan, some sort of, something solidified to make sure that we had, that we were prepared for when this happened. And unfortunately, it didn't. I tried, I put my neck out on the line, but when other people aren't willing to do that, there's only so much that I am able to do.
There's a lot of people that have always had the sentiment of a lot of people in this room have was just not deal with it, like, just stay opted out, but we're, we're seeing it happen more and more often, and we're at a point now, we're at a crossroads where we have to deal with this issue, whether you like it or you don't like it, whether you're for it or you're against it, it doesn't matter. We have to deal with the issue. It's not going to go away.
My name's Ken Vanney, I'm a citizen of the city of Montevista. If I understand that right, there's nothing in your zoning regulations that stipulates where it can be or cannot, so why can't you do that? Can't you create an ordinance or a resolution in your zoning regulations that says, this is what, if you want to place a, a dispensary or a medical marijuana facility in this particular zone district, here's the requirements that you're going to have to meet. You're going to have your thousand feet, 500 feet, you have that choice.
Right.
And that makes sense for me to do, and you don't have to wait until they decide they're going to have one. You need to do it now. You get a, you get an ordinance, get something in place, then he's going to have to comply with that on that particular location.
Thank you for understanding.
Well, no, what he's saying, we have to, we can set ordinances, Matt, say you put your neck on the line, I don't recall you making a motion once regarding this. That's true, you've got power every week.
What would I motion for?
For, make a motion to set the dis, minimum distance between marijuana facility and a school at, what's the distance across Montevista? You know? Let's say three miles, how's that? I made that motion, there a second?
Yeah, but that's one person talking, that's not discussing.
I just made a motion. Is it going to die for like a second? Yep, you have that power too. So any of this stuff, you could have made motions on board, and we could have voted.
And that is very true, but I also did not want to act unilaterally with just Montevista when the entire San Luis Valley is affected by this same issue, and instead of.
Are you representing the San Luis Valley or are you representing Montevista?
I'm representing Montevista.
Okay.
And, well, first of all, I just want to say, I don't appreciate the snarky comments that are coming, because I'm, I'm, I haven't been snarky and I have not been unprofessional. I am trying to figure out the best solution possible for this community with the issue that we have right now.
And what about the way you were talking about the chief of police at the concert at, during the stand-up?
You know, we would like to not have helpers from the crowd. What we do have here is we have a little bit of snarkiness, we've got some back and forth going on, we've got a lot of disrespect. A lot of people feel, feel very passionate about this, I get that. There's a lot of passion, there's a lot of, we want to accomplish something, and I get that, but at the same time, we've got to make sure we're respecting the entire city 100%, even the elected 100%. And so we have to make sure that we're being professional here, that we're working towards doing what is best for the city.
Can we put something in the paper to alert the people? A truthful article to alert the people, this is what's happening?
Anybody can, as long as we agree.
He's right.
You guys have Facebook?
Yeah, on the legal issue about enacting any types of rules right now, this, to me, is a little bit of cart before the horse. We have on the books of our code what we call an opt-out ordinance, an opt-out code provision. It allows no types of marijuana anywhere in the city for retail purposes, whether it be a grow facility, an infused products facility, a retail store, recreational, or medical marijuana store. None of those outlets are allowed in the city of Montevista. So you've got to, you've got to address whether you intend to reverse that, whether it be by the council determining not to take any action on this matter, which would remain, allow those provisions to remain in place, or whether you want to take action on some type of referendum or something like that, before you address any types of regulations that govern that, because if you address zoning regulations or distance regulations, it would have no meaning.
So what's the issue right now? If we, if, if the city's already opted out, why are we even talking? I haven't heard what, what's on the table. What is the issue?
So what, what is the issue is?
Yeah, it hasn't been stated. In other words, I'm confused. I'm confused.
All right, I apologize for that. What the issue is on the table right now is we've been asked to opt in. That's what we've been asked for.
That answers my question, thank you.
Excuse me, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry.
No, you're fine.
All I wanted to say is, since everybody is a little bit fiery and kind of just attacking you guys, maybe you guys could have a private meeting or maybe just, I don't know, I just want, I just want everybody to show respect.
Well, it's up to the mayor to control the crowd.
Do you know what's happening?
Um, yes, just talking about the zoning and stuff like that, I personally think I'm just going to take this to the ballot and see. You know what I mean? I, I want to leave, I want to leave all the power up to you guys, I, I personally trust and would listen to anything you guys have to say. If before all this would have happened, I'd done my research on the Lutheran pub, on the Lutheran private school, you know what I mean? If I'd have found anything, any little thing that would have steered me the other way, and I know they're all here, and I'm really, really sorry, but there's a liquor store next to a church by Safeway, you know what I mean? There's no, there's no legitimate thing that, that's saying that that school is, is with the state of Colorado. The, you don't even have to be a certified teacher to teach over there, a state certified teacher, you don't have to. It's, it's, it's just funny, there's, there's red tape around all of it and stuff like that, but I just, I know this is going to go to a zoning committee and stuff like that, but I have a feeling you guys are going to zone me out, you are going to zone me out and just say, we're going to do it, but we're not going to do it here, and I don't think that's fair either. So just at, at the first twitch of a hand, just let me know, and I'll petition to take this to a ballot, but I do, I do sincerely trust you guys, even you, you know what I mean? You're, you're, you know what I mean? You guys know what you're doing. You really, really do. All I'm trying to do is open a business. If any of you guys have any questions regarding anything, come and ask me, even you guys. My, I've never seen any of you patronize my business, and it's funny, you're, you're here now, but if you have any questions, I'm always there. I'm just.
That's interesting, because I believe that Mr. Farish asked you if you ran a legitimate business, and I drive by your business three, four, five times a day. The only time that gate has been open, other than today, was Monday, and that was from the last week.
Madam, Madam Mayor.
Kathy, you know what, it doesn't matter what his business hours are, it's his business, and if he's making a living, then, then so be it. Okay, so please, please, let's not do any personal attacks on people.
He's saying it's not legitimate. I don't see that his business is legitimate, it's never.
Go in there and you'll see all my business licenses and everything.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
And council? So, do I understand this right? So if he chooses to put it on the ballot, you already have an ordinance that says you have the choice to either opt in or opt out. So then is he going to create a ballot issue overriding that particular part of your ordinance? Is that what he's trying to do? Does he understand that? I don't, from his conversation, that's not what he's talking about. Basically, what he's talking about right now, from what I understand, is he's coming to you saying, hey, I want to put in the retail sales, but there's, he can't do that. You haven't opted, you've opted out, you're out of it. So I don't know what he's, what he's trying to do.
But also, in, in the state of Colorado, just from, all the way down from us municipalities all the way to the state, anybody can put up a ballot question that would override any of the, any previous ordinances if it passes, and depending on, and it's all dependent.
Right, correct?
Correct. I mean, and that's, and that's something that would, you know, again, if he chose to do that, that would be his, his word.
I would have heard it myself.
And, and again, depending on, on what it is, I mean, it, it varies from, you know, again, for a municipality, it's, the petition number is rather small as opposed to the state, which is a rather large number that you have to get it on, but it's all varying on that.
So what your choice would be then, if you want to have control over that, then what you're, what you're trying to decide now is, is, so we have control over that, then we want to create a ballot issue so that we can state how we want that to be, rather than leaving it up to him to override that particular ordinance, is that correct?
Yes.
Yes. You're making, everybody's making some assumptions here that may or may not be warranted. He made petition, you may refer this matter out to the voters on something different than what he's going to do, first of all.
Right.
And second of all, you know, everybody's making the assumption that there's not going to be some type of overwhelming vote against his proposal, which may be an unwarranted assumption considering the sentiments that I've seen here.
What is his proposal?
Well, his proposal is to do exactly what you're saying, Ken, is to overcome the ordinance that's in a, in place. He would have to do that.
Right.
How many signatures would he need?
Well, it, it doesn't take that many signatures to get to the ballot, but it's a vote of the majority of the people. but it's a vote of the majority of the people after that.
So we could let him petition it with a few signatures and get it on the ballot with his wording? Or we could right here opt to put it on the ballot ourselves where we control the question of the wording and the taxation?
So, so can you make that decision tonight? I mean, can you do that now? Cause so that's, that's what you're trying to, that's what you're trying to resolve right now, if I understand it right. Cause you want, someone needs to make a motion to whatever to override that amendment, either opt-in or opt-out, so that you can get that on the ballot so you can write it the way you want to. I'm for that.
Right.
So if we do that, if we put it on the ballot, what's to stop him from putting his own question on the ballot?
At that point, wouldn't it override his question?
We would, we would have competing ballot questions, so we get into some issues there, but we'll have to see what he does before we answer that question, frankly.
Who has to approve that? The county clerk or the city clerk?
No, the city. We would have to approve that at the city level.
Right.
But it's potential, he could still put a ballot question on there even if...
Potentially, potentially possible, but I don't think we could have two ballot questions going on the same issue at the same time.
But he could create another name for his issue.
Could. He could create another negative issue.
Actually, it's been my experience, obviously, with my experience in different states and even here, that competing ballot issues have been, I don't know if I'm missing the point there, but my, my thinking was initially before that started was there's really nothing to stop another ballot issue going on. I just would hesitate. I would question the, the good thinking of the council or the city to put on our own ballot regarding how we should control this. By inference, we're saying we're in favor of it. And as we stand right now, we've got a simple process already in place. We have voted to opt-out. You are our representatives. You've done that. Just stick with it. And if there's more applicants for the idea of rescinding that, then we just have to deal with that as it comes along. Whether it's a ballot issue or an ordinance, it's gonna continue to come up, just like you said. The ordinance is much simpler to, to, to just leave as it is whenever it, let them bring it up and let us keep voting it down.
But if you don't control your ordinance, then anything that you do, then that gives you the opportunity to create a zoning regulation to where they can and cannot be. And you're not gonna just isolate him out. I know. I've been there, done that a million times. And so you look at the entire city, your commercial areas, do we wanna do it in industrial zone? Do we wanna do it in a commercial zone? Do we wanna do it residential? I mean, you guys are gonna be in control. So you gotta make a decision because the ordinance is there. And so you're, you're in the driver's seat right now.
Basically, your ordinance, if I might, Mayor, your ordinance would control what you're going to allow or not allow, whether it's retail, medical, infused products, testing facilities, cultivation facilities. That's, that would be the subject of the whole ballot issue, as I understand it. When you get to the place where if that passes, then the council is, is, would have to enact a whole set of regulations dealing with that. That's the way it procedurally goes. But the initial question is, is this to be allowed or not allowed in any of those forms? And if so, which ones?
But we can also add on the taxation question and...
Well, you can, you can pass the tax measure because frankly, passing the marijuana question without a taxation question is somewhat absurd as far as the finances of the town are concerned because you have...
He petitions it. He does not have to include that.
He doesn't have to include it on his, right. But the town would have to look at the administrative costs of this, the law enforcement costs of this, the social costs of this, all those issues.
But it's up to the taxpayers either way, whether he petitions it or we just...
It is. It is. But we're making the assumption, the requirements are somewhat technical about ballot issues and the referendum and initiative process. So we're making the assumptions that he is going to do this. That may or may not be an unwarranted assumption.
When he does this, we could go ahead and propose a tax measure at that point.
You could.
But why, but you can still make a, you can still make a zoning ordinance at outlining where you can and cannot have a facility, whether it's grow or medical, marijuana, any of that, right?
Well, at this point in time, what I'm saying, Ken, is it probably wouldn't make any sense to pass an ordinance on something that's illegal in the first place by your code.
Well, but it's legal according to Colorado statutes.
No, but we control that.
Huh?
The town controls whether you can have re, any type, any type of retail outlets at all. Amendment 64, and people get confused on this when they start talking about marijuana, that it allows marijuana. It allows towns and counties to determine whether you're gonna have those outlets or whether you're not.
But don't you put an ord, or I'm used to resolutions, so you gotta bear with me. But when you have an ordinance in your zoning regulations, you can put a zoning regulation in there that's gonna tell you where you can put an outhouse, where you can put a dispensary or any of that. So why can't that be done now?
Because you would be creating a zoning ordinance for something that your code, it would be contrary to the other provisions in your code.
Contrary to that ordinance that you just outlined?
The opt-out ordinance that we've got in effect right now.
So surely there's a way around that.
Well, I mean, why would you want there to be a way around it? Because if it becomes reality, then you're going to enact those regulations anyway.
Yeah, I see what you're saying there.
So say the referendum passes. Until those ordinance are put in place, the regulations, no facility will be approved until those are...
Right. You're gonna have to have, right.
So for whatever time it goes to get that in place. So there's no need to have it ahead of you.
Right. No, I see no necessity for that until you do that.
I would just like to remind you guys that the election's coming in November and, you know what I mean? Just like I say, truly and completely just wanna leave it up to you guys, you know what I mean? Cause you do your job better than I would do your job, you know what I mean? So I wanna leave it to you guys, but if we don't kick this thing in the, kick this thing in the hills, I am gonna put it to ballot. November's coming pretty soon. I already talked to a couple lawyers and stuff like that. You know what I mean? The money that it's gonna cost you guys is gonna come out of my application fees, out of the thousands and thousands of dollars that I pay for the state that you get half of. Don't believe, you know, take it and kick it around and mix it around. It's like buying a piece of property from a 90-year-old man. The old trees are still there, the old dead trees, you know what I mean? You left it just the way you wanted it. It's mine. I wanna plow it. I wanna plant. I wanna water. I wanna do everything. And understand, I just wanna make money for all of us, you know? It's not a...
Well, Madam Mayor, I believe, and I think that our city clerk can confirm this, that the deadline to put initiatives on the November ballot in Rio Grande County has already expired. So the requirement would be if there is a petition, that it would have to be a special election.
I'm 34 years old. I got nothing but time, you know?
Well, speaking of the issue of whether or not, but November is not an option.
So if, if he were to petition this, we would have to do a special election. However, if we vote to put it to the voters ourselves...
Still.
Still.
Still a special election.
Still a special election, okay.
Right. Yeah, either way it costs the city.
The same amendment.
Yeah.
Well, and this just popped in my head too. So either, either way, right? So if Mr. Gago puts it on the ballot, we put it on the ballot. If we were to put it on the ballot, we could set an implementation date as well, correct? Like so if, if we were to put it on the ballot and say, if there was, well, that, that like, if it were to pass, that it wouldn't take effect until, like, or what was it, like a year or whatever out? Whereas if he were to put it on the ballot, I mean, there's obviously still some lifetime between an election and, and the zoning. But is that something that we could do and include in that? Or is that something that's kinda off the table?
You're gonna have to pass, you're gonna have to pass rules and regulations and ordinance, all of that dealing with the whole panoply of the zoning issue for that, the number of outlets, all of those types of things. And getting that, that whole package together is gonna be lengthy. And he's not going to be able to operate until you do that.
That's my point, I guess, is, is there a set time period where it has to be enacted? Or where, or where, or is it just when all these things are set up?
I think it's, I think it's when they're actually set in place because he has to have a license to operate. And you're not gonna grant that license until these regulations are in place, if it passes.
That's, that's what I was asking was, was the timeframe. Like if, if, so like if he were to put it on the ballot and it were to pass, it would be the next day or the next week that he can, that he can open up?
He can't, he can't, he cannot operate without a local license.
That's, that's my question.
I move that we put a referendum to election to the people with the wording to be determined at a later date.
So.
Do we have a motion at the second? Any other discussion?
How could you vote yes on a wording to be determined at a later date?
We can't really come up with the wording right now. And what I would...
Well, then let's take it.
There's a motion and a second at this one.
I have a legal question with that. Is, councillor, is your motion addressing recreational retail marijuana stores? Is it addressing infused products? Is it addressing cultivation facilities? Is it addressing testing facilities? Or only one of those or one or more of those? Cause we, I need to know how to draft this ballot language if this passes.
I would say that the motion encompasses all of that.
Okay. Thank you.
My motion is that in the later discussion? Councillor Schlafer?
Aye.
Councillor Mas penis?
Aye.
Councillor Traeger?
Aye.
Councillor Lawrence?
May.
Mayor Garcia?
Aye.
Okay, moving on.
I just have a question. How do we do recall?
You can set up an appointment before I start tomorrow morning.
Open again.
Citizens comments and special presentations. We have Acting Chief Evan Lopez here to swear in to officers, Officer Stephen Fino and Officer Brian Rabel.
So, Madam Mayor and councillor, I'd like to introduce you to our newly hired part-time officer. Stephen Fino, for a right one, I think, Brian Rabel. He's been with us for a couple of weeks and I'm gonna go ahead and swear in. So I, Brian Rabel?
Aye, Brian Rabel.
Do you solemnly swear in firm?
Do you solemnly swear in firm that I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States? The Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado?
The Constitution and laws of Colorado.
And the ordinances of the city of Montevista?
And the ordinances of the city of Montevista?
That I will faithfully, that I will faithfully perform the duties of the, perform the duties of...
Montevista Police Officer.
Montevista Police Officer. Next, I'd like to call up Stephen Fino. Stephen Fino, who is also hired about a month ago or so. He's also pulled in on a part-time position as a police officer. I, Officer Stephen Fino?
I, Officer Stephen Fino.
Do you solemnly swear in firm?
Do you solemnly swear in firm?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado?
Constitution and laws of the state of Colorado.
And the, and the ordinances of the city of Montevista?
And the ordinances of the city of Montevista.
That I will faithfully perform the duties?
That I will faithfully perform the duties.
A police officer?
A police officer.
Which way, which way I am about to enter?
Which I am about to.
But they gave me, what's gotta be in it?
Would you want a picture of someone's officer that night just apart? Since you guys took time out of your schedules and... Would you want more photo and click on the officer? It gets very impressive that all of you guys came in and supported and stuck around for an hour and a half to...
It means a lot, isn't it?
It does. It really does mean a lot. Okay, it's my understanding the next item on the agenda has been removed. Okay, so the next item is our airport consultant from Ryan Pritchett Armstrong Consultants. Did I say all of them named right?
Yeah, I'm Ryan Pritchett and I have with me Jake Hogan. I've been with the firm for 30 years and working with the city of Montevista for a long time. The packet that's in front of you represents several pieces of paper. One is, the first one that you have is a brochure that we put together for economic development reasons. It's a front and back and it has statistical information about the airport. I think it's been used in the UAS, trying to get UAS to the airport. The second piece of paper Jake's gonna talk about, and that's this year's project. It turned out to be pretty successful and we wanted to just come and highlight some of the things and features about the project. There's a before and after picture in that. There's a before and after picture in that piece of paper. The next piece of paper in the packet is your capital improvement program. The capital improvement program is, combines both state and federal funds, whereby this particular airport in the Los Angeles Valley is on the National Plan of Integrated Airports, which qualifies for both. That means when the city of Montevista does elect to do a project at the airport, and the funding agencies see fit that they wanna fund the project, it is a high enough priority project, that the city is able to do it for about 5%, which is a, it's huge economic development for, for the city, what the jobs creates. And so, with that said, I just wanna turn it over to Jake and let him explain some of the things about this project.
Thanks, Ryan. Like Ryan said, I'm Jake Hovin, just wanna thank you guys for allowing us to have a couple of minutes of your time. That, the photo there, we have a couple of photos of the project that just wrapped up on June 27th, Aswell Concerts Inc. out of Alamosa, started the project early there, there for 45 days, had runway shut down for a little while to put, to make the pavement connect to the runway there. It's a, turned out to be a really nice project, Ryan and I were out there this afternoon taking pictures and taking a look at it, and I'd recommend that anyone who has an interest in flying, or just the airport in general, head out there and take a look, got a really nice facility. But I wanted to let you know that the reason that we did that, we added some additional apron areas, so there's now seven more tie-downs for aircraft to tie down to your apron. There's also some additional taxiways to aid in safety and circulation for aircraft as they're maneuvering on the airfield, so we're real excited. We, here in the next couple of weeks, we'll be having a final inspection with the FAA out on site, so I'll be down here again, meet with them, once we're done with that, we'll close it out and we'll wrap up that project, and then we look forward to working with you from anywhere, Mr. Trump, so thank you.
Thank you. You covered it very well. It was a good project. I have told you guys, at council meetings this time, it's gone. Almost scary smoothie. Very nice, yes. It's actually pretty well wrapped up, I think there's one punk item that talked about, and then I think we're pretty good, so very good project. Very good, very happy with the way these guys conducted the project.
Thank you.
So now we're open to any other citizen comments, considering, we've got city members report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, councillors, it'll be very brief this evening. One thing I did wanna point out from our report per the discussion with the council, that Chief and I will be recruiting for a full-time code officer. We have Angela Bonemire is doing that currently, but it was kind of a temporary plug, and we actually worked on a couple of do not occupy orders today, so she's, she's doing fine with it, but it's really maybe not her first preference. So we have gone ahead, the advertisement has already been posted, and Chief and I will cycle through that as we get applicants, it'll close in a couple of weeks, and we'll move forward from there. The only other thing I have, it's, is a, maybe a lighter thing, is that CML District Eight meeting, I didn't know, I can sign you all up for it, whoever's interested in, if you just wanna let me know.
Joe, what was September 8th?
It's September 28th, which is a Wednesday in Southport.
In Southport. I, I'll go.
I will go.
And that starts when?
We've got four.
Do you make your preferences now, for us?
If you know, if you know the answer to that, sure.
I know the answer, I can speak for anybody else. You know me, I'm always-
Oh, actually, it says it's a buffet, doesn't it?
Yep.
Yeah.
So it's just the offering?
So chicken-
Those items, and if you, if Joe would like to specify-
I think it's like that vegetarian option.
They do have a gluten-
Say something about gluten-free?
They do have a gluten-free option.
You could specify that, that would be appreciated.
Okay, definitely. That's really all I have, Nika is not with us this evening, high school orientation, which she indicated was gonna be particularly interesting, so I excuse her from appearing tonight, if there's any questions on her report, let me know, and we'll go from there. Thank you.
Oh, hi, thanks for your time, and I, I know I didn't make the last meeting, so I'm just gonna go back to where I missed the last meeting and go to what we've been doing now. Pretty much, we finished with our baseball programs back then, and we just started our softball. And just every month, as I keep mentioning to you guys, we try to improve our programs and get more kids register and get involved, and so, right now, we're starting with football and volleyball. You open registration from July 1st through July 25th. I know there's had been some issues in the past to parents not getting to registration date on time, and so we end up registering these close to starting the season, and so that's costing our department a little more, as far as sporting uniforms, after we have ordered a bunch, and so it's been an upset of that, started revenue, what's going, and what's going now. So, I'm trying to put a, how can I say, not sounding mean, but kinda educate our parents that we have a limit to do this and to be prepared for the season, so I'm putting restrictions in some, and upset parents as far as, you know, that we can't let them get in after we close the restriction. We closed it on 25th, I opened it for two more weeks, we closed last Monday, and I still have getting calls right now, kids wanna register, and I don't blame them, the kids, you know, the kids can't drive, the kids can't, don't have an account, or, you know, so I'm just, you know, I hate to say no to those kids that wanna play, but I think at one point we have to let them know, we have to get prepared for this, and we can't just be doing this every season, so give my ears some of that. I'm very, I think, I'm very happy with starting the football season this, this season, I met with the high school coaches, I get their input of what they want us to prepare our kids, because we're pretty much pushing and getting ready for them, and I go with every sport, so I'm gonna try to deal with every sport, every head coach from the middle school to high school. I wanted to keep this up, or input as far as, we want you to work on this. I know that we gotta prepare them as far as fundamentals, but I know there's other plays, other things that they do, that if we get them ready for them, they don't have to worry about that when they get them. So, with that said, the high school, they was pretty excited, they get more involved, they actually allow us to use the facilities at the middle school to host games on their field, so allows to get into their high school game field, to have a night game under the lights for the kids, that's always exciting, and we're working on having like a halftime presentation for the EWS during a high school game. So, little things like that, it makes a lot of difference for the kids, they feel like they're more involved, so very excited about that. We, we have enough kids to play one team half. The other thing that we did is that, I think in the past, we've been jumping from A-men to 11-men football, and we wanna keep it strictly 11-men, because that's what the middle school's playing and that's what the high school is playing, so I don't know why we're doing A-men, teach them different setup when they're going to 11, and that's just confusing them, so we just stand strictly A-11-men, and that's what we're doing. So, moving on with the sky high, you know, we was during the stampede week, it was, I, I, well, it wasn't crazy busy, I would say, or maybe I just didn't snap until that week off, I would keep saying, well, nothing's happening, and Robert's like, oh, it'll come, it'll come. It did, it did come, but, and so the crew that I had, and Robert's help with, you know, kinda helping us, everything that we need, yeah, come here, we have it, we can use it, and so that helped a lot. I didn't hear any complaints, we didn't get a lot of calls, and so did Robert, when I got with him, he's the same thing, so, everything that everything went right, I think it went well, so we'll try to keep that up, and, and that was with, anything that happens around our facilities, we try our best to accommodate everything and make sure that everything comes through. We also, right after the stampede, we have the, the SLV fair, and that was a big event also, so there was like one day or two days to get the facilities ready for the next one, and so, but we got, we managed to get it done, thanks to the, the, they've been, they've been using them a lot, you know, and that's what we're talking about, they've been putting in a lot of hours, but we give it all those times as necessary, so. Keep working with the softball fields, we get into the season where it's just getting cold, but we're trying to maintain them, and try to keep them, you know, even though it's not being used, we go and drag them once in a while, and just keep them level, because in the past, we just, they just let them, and all the wind and all the dirt just keeps going into the field, and then when we get to use them, it's like going to the sand dunes, so try to keep that, you know, level and stuff. The new projects that are coming, of course, you know, it's the Potato Fest, we're starting to get ready for that, and we're already planning, we have a couple of people registered already for the 5K run, and I haven't, it's my first year, so we'll see how it goes. I guess everything that I can see is like my first year, because it is, you know, it's something new to me, so I just go as, as it comes and try my best. I wish I had my crew here, you know, like I say, I wanna take my crew, Tony, Coranza, and Kim, they, they, when I need them there, they, you know, they know what they're doing, and sometimes they walk me through what I have to get done, their way, but sometimes it's get it done, so we, we're working together to make some changes, and, and give everything to policies and procedures and how it's done, how it's supposed to be done, so I think we'll get it there. And I know there were some comments about bringing more activities for adults, we're still working on it, I opened the adults softball league since August 1st, and it closes now last week, August, because I want to start in September, I haven't, I haven't had no registration, nobody registered for it, so we're gonna move on to the next one, we're gonna try volleyball, and hopefully we get some interest on that. I just, like I mentioned before, it's gonna be a slow process, but surely I think we can bring those sports back, and we can bring this community back to where it's supposed to be. Do you have any questions for me?
Good evening, I'm gonna kinda keep this short, it's been kind of a long night, I'm sure for you guys, so, I'm just gonna touch on things, if you have questions, please feel free to ask me. The streets, we did the after stampede cleanup, I've got a couple of guys running around painting stripes, we're concentrating on these school zones, the goal is to have them done prior to school starting, so we'll keep working on that, and I have another guy mowing weeds, he should be finishing up the airport today, I'm hoping everything's done at the airport, and then we'll start getting back into town, getting all our city properties moved. Parks, we did lose one of our seasonal employees who's starting his college career, Randy Morelde, very great young man, I cannot say enough about him, he came in, he worked very hard every day, good young man, so if you happen to know him, tell him we appreciate the work, he did a great job, of course. With that, we're gonna finish out the season with just our normal full-time employee at one seasonal, so we're gonna adjust the mowing schedules a little bit, and also, being this time of the year, we're gonna readjust some of the watering schedules. I walked Chapman Park today, and it was more of a bog than it is a park, so we're gonna dry it up a little bit, so. The utilities, we've been going around painting all of our pump houses, we also have the signs that came in from our source water protection grant that we had a lot back, it's been almost a year now, so they finally come in, so we're gonna be installing those, just letting people know that they're coming into a protected area to kinda watch what they do and make sure they won't slip in. Can't say it enough, our maintenance guy is doing fantastic, fantastic job. Chris, our new mechanic is just really getting after getting some of our stuff fixed, unfortunately, as he fixes them, things continue to break, so, we're, we're gonna get there. Just a real quick update on the mosquito trucks that I talked to you guys about, one is back up and running, the one that threw the timing chain, that one's up running again, the other one does indeed have a blown motor, so I'm gonna pursue some other ideas, I'm not sure that truck's really worth sticking another motor into, so, we're looking at that. I did include something maybe a little different, just an idea of some of the stuff that I've been up to, you know, I've been going to meetings, probably the biggest meeting I went to was the TPR, our regional transportation planning, meeting that we have with CDOT. I did two things, I first voiced our displeasure with the restriping project they did on 160 here recently, and then I also said thank you, because once Forrest made the contact and was able to get ahold of them, their response was incredibly quick, I mean, we had probably 30 minutes after the first call, we had a response call, and by, within three hours, and it was mainly setting up my time, we had a conference call, and things were laid out, and changes were made, so, so both good and bad. You can read my report, I think the changes, once people get used to them, are gonna be fairly well, I'm not gonna comment on the sharos, the arrows that you see on the driving lanes, those are actually called sharos, and you share the road with bicyclists. There's been a lot of community discussion on some of the Facebook stuff, what they mean, they just simply, exactly what statute says, share the road with the bicycles. The solid white stripe and everything to the south and north of those stripes on the edges are actually parking, they're not a bike lane, it's actually on-street parking.
Oh, okay.
Okay? Yeah, so sewer project?
Maybe we could put out a little, in our next letter in the paper, or we could put out a special, because I have been actually approached many people too, what does that mean, and I, I have, you know, my folks, there's a bike, you know, that space, and-
I can throw something together, give it to the AM, give it a little quick word.
Yeah, I think there, there is some confusion, like what exactly is all that about?
Okay, can do that. All right, sewer project in my report, I told you I thought we were gonna have our first major change order, it luckily turned out not to be quite as major as we first thought, once we got everything exposed, the sewer, or the lariat drainage ditch that we were concerned with, with that cross culvert, was actually eight inches into it, so what we wound up doing was kind, we thought at first we were gonna have to replace the culvert all the way across, and that started adding up, because that's what we went with the ditch owners, and the ditch, they were talking, changing head walls and doing all kinds of stuff. For us, where that cut was, there happened to be a band on that culvert, so we were able to undo the band, and then we did spend a little money on concrete, we basically poured our own base for the manhole, and scooched everything about 10 inches up, and then started putting the barrels, so we bypassed the culvert, we removed the culvert just long enough so we'd get the trench box in to keep the workers safe, and as soon as we got the barrels on, reattached the band and the culvert, backfilled it, and nothing changed, so ditch owners should be happy, because nothing changed on their stuff. So, a little, little in-the-field engineering, but we got it, so, we're still gonna have a little change order, I highly doubt it's gonna be over $1,000, if it is, I'm talking with the project, the contractor, they're gonna see if they can get that extra concrete in the project, so we might not have to pay anything, so it turned out pretty well. Other sewer-related ideas, we advertised both for the cleaning and cambering, and also the lariat lift station, I received a few phone calls on both, so we do have some interest, we did this week have a pre-bid meeting on the lariat lift station, we had two potential leaders there, so we do have some interest, so both of those projects should be completed this year, so. Airport project, you guys talked to Brian and him, so I won't touch on that. Airport project, you guys talked to Brian and Emso, I'll touch on that. Pretty much, I added the column as far as our strategic goals. I updated council last meeting, so I'm not gonna, nothing significantly changed on that, so with that, I'll open it up for any questions you may have.
I just have a comment that I want to thank the city workers for the wonderful job they got did cutting trees. I had a broken limb in my tree that I never saw till several weeks ago, and they came by and cut that limb out and did a beautiful job. So they've done, and they're the nicest people to talk to everywhere, so thank you for that. Please pass that along.
I will say that time and time again, I have a wonderful group.
Yes, you do. They're amazing, professional, delightful people. Thank you.
Thank you.
That's very nice to hear.
I do have a question, Rob. I meant to drive through down to Avenue Street on my way here, and did somebody not water the flowers on?
Flowers are dying. We're watering it according to the schedule, they're just not holding up, and I don't have staff to be out there every single day watering. So we went ahead, I think they pulled them today, and now they're gonna pull them next week, so there's not dead flowers sitting out on the main street. Something we will talk about during budget, might have to at least bring a part-time guy in just to do the watering of the trees, because all those trees and the tree wells don't have watering. C dot would not allow us to put a water system built that way. So those are all hand-watered once a week, and we try to get three times a week on the plants, but it's just not, even though I'm out here in the city hall, it's not doing very well.
So businesses water?
That's something that I'm looking into to see. The problem is, is if you can get a business started on it, but keep it going over time, is, I mean, it's any volunteer, the excitement wears out over time, so.
Madam Mayor, could I add one thing to Rob's report, kind of a breaking news thing, perhaps? So you recall at the last meeting, the council authorized the group that was interested in tennis courts to go forward with writing GOCO grant, and interestingly enough, they went out and got an informal bid from somebody, which was a lot less expensive than what we had imagined. So next week, Rob's actually gonna put that project out to bid. I think, based on the price that we got right now, it's like fifteen K. We were thinking way more than that. So if that's the case, and we can get a bid in like that, I think that opens up the GOCO door again, because it's really not worth writing a GOCO for that, and we can use Conservation Trust funds that the city has, because it's outdoor recreation. So we already, I think, have the money. I always think you would use that money to match the GOCO, because it was a lot bigger, but apparently it's not. So Rob will put those out, so if you saw the bids, you wouldn't be surprised, like what are we bidding this for? And that may open the door for some other GOCO proposal to the council, so that's, yeah.
First, just a quick question. If we are that much lower, and I'm just throwing this one right at you, would it be possible to explore the pickleball courts as well, what we're doing with tennis courts?
You have an option A and B?
Yeah.
And you could award both or?
Yeah.
Safely?
Yeah, good point, Councilor, but we'll work it in there.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, good idea.
Any other questions for that? Okay, thank you. Brandon?
Madam Mayor, my report is in the council, I think you have some questions? Any questions? Rather than that, it's just, it's been busy, I feel Rob's out there doing all this cement and man work, and I'm not doing any of that. And I'm not volunteering.
I was jealous, because Jaime was talking about doing stuff under the lights. Usually if we're under the lights, it's not a good thing. Swear on that, Jim.
Just for fun or not? Okay.
Thank you. I think a lot of this stuff we've already talked about, July was a very interesting month for it. I came back from Kason, she was leaving, and I got hit with a stampede right away, but I think a lot of that stuff was set up, and lucky for me, because it was six months that pizza, I had more of an idea ahead of it. For the total month of July, we had seven burglary reports, which is not too bad. I'm not saying we're not gonna have them, we're just gonna always have them, but it's down, appreciate it. Fourteen reported thefts, according to our reporting system, that could include anything from shoplifting, just a general theft, I'll be walking into your R M S. About one hundred and forty-five citations written for the month, one hundred and twenty-one reports taken. If you look at the graphs in the back, so I pulled up R M S, there's a lot more total reports in there. And while I went back to look at them, our secretary of trade says she's working with R M S and my group, we're trying to get it to work together, so she asked to make up the burglary reports, and I was like, all right, we have a hundred and sixty reports, and that's what that was. That's why if you look at the graphs, there's certain things, it's prostitution, homicides, and that, we really didn't have that. As you all know, we had the Ficality on East Drive the night of the concert. Stampede went well, we had our normal business, still a festival party, we're on the west of the country, we're doing a lot of good, well, very, very good. Thanks to Rob and your crew again for helping us on Thursday. Our G S O T is, he helped us on a couple years, he was chasing calls during the time. We had two guys that went to bike patrol, so hopefully that's the one that can fit on a slower date, rather than riding around or something. We finished up our last week of flickety ticket, wrote up some more traffic tickets. Our average per our survey, we're about eighty, eighty-three percent compliance with seatbelts in town. You might have heard we had one B pursuit in town, we started off fairly quickly. I've tried to split the D's off some of that. Citizens Academy, we finished up with that, graduated seven to eight students, and we helped to continue that. That was a lot of fun for a lot of guys, and I have to say, too, not too up to date on the Shank case, but Orange Hospital, I actually gave a updated statement there for you guys. And the most recent and new current event that I have to bring up is August 10th, we had a, to me, it's a pretty decent drug bust, we had a neighborhood watch type complaint, anonymous call, we went, we go into these houses every day, and we took out ten, twelve thousand dollars worth of drugs out of the car, and multiple firearms. Had four different drug arrests. Narcan, I'll probably be trying to pull up some dates on some of the officers, I think they administered Narcan to county and in-town handeluses for all the overdoses, like this heroin and pills, and I think they probably administered seven or eight of them already, and all of them are lifesavers. So I'm gonna try and put this together, so my server for my officers on that. I just received news through the grant that was funding this, they're no longer gonna do it, so, and then we all know we have two new officers.
Any questions? Questions for faculty?
I'd just like to say again, in the transition period, all of you guys have been in a heck of a job, and I really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Your post is great.
Yes, it's awesome.
Oh, and I forgot to mention that, we did have some business that got broken into next to Pizza Hut. They took these titles and five or six cars out of the, all the cars, to my knowledge, have been recovered anywhere from here in Walsenburg. So we got two people in custody for that.
Let's get to you.
Yeah, thank you, absolutely.
Thank you. Jean?
Thank you, Mayor. Got one court case that's dealing with a nuisance right now. It seems to be what we're dealing with lately, is a lot of nuisance issues involving a threat to an officer, so that is in process, and we're dealing with motions on that case. In regard to code enforcement, I sat down today with Angela, the code enforcement officer, and we spent some time on the phone with the state historic preservation officer because of the sequestration property. It is, in fact, on the state registry, but there's a protocol that really brings in what we've been doing with other properties with urban renewal, the same process, because you have to go through that, and you have to, with government funds, you have to determine whether there's any historic preservation issues in that whole thing. So you, notification has to be given to a list of people. We were talking to Joseph Saldebar, who is the state preservation officer responsible for this, and so then there's a reply back, they have thirty days to reply, and it's some agencies that I never dreamed of, like the tribal council and folks like that, that get these reports before we can begin demolition, and they make a determination that demolition can occur. So that is in process, and then we went over and we walked together the railroad property out there and took a look at all the old cars, and the weeds are incredible. I mean, they're, they tower ten feet or so, and there's a lot of cleanup that's gonna have to be done on that property. Looking at that and getting the response out of Angela, her conversations with the owner of the property, who actually, right now, apparently is in the hospital, I feel that, and I was hoping that I could get all this done with our present nuisance code, which was my first response, but now I think that I am going to have, Mayor, probably an amendment or two to the nuisance code that specifically brings this in, because I'm not entirely comfortable now with having reviewed all that the way that it's phrased, so I would anticipate bringing that before you, hopefully by the next meeting or the meeting after In regard to the issue that just came up of drafting on the ballot, I will do my best to, I've only got a day, I'm gonna be gone from Saturday through the end of the month. Kate Johns is gonna be pinch hitting for me over here while I'm gone, but I will try my best to get something out as quickly as possible to you on the ballot language. I think timing is another issue about that, but you're, incidentally, doing that the same that Del Norte finally determined to do it. So there will be comparable ballot issues there, it's just the timing is not the same, because they're going to it in November, they already had that going on several weeks ago, and ours would not work with a coordinated election at this point, so we're gonna have to look at that, but I'll try, if it's possible for me to get that out, because I'll only have, the day that I get back is the day of the council meeting, so I will see what I can get done on that tomorrow for you. So those are things I've been working on, or I am working on now.
Any questions for Jean? Thank you. Jason?
The other thing, my husband and I attended the fundraiser dinner in Del Norte a couple of weeks. It's a dinner to help local veterans with their out-of-pocket expenses as they pursue traveling, for instance, for medical treatment. I was disappointed in the turnout, we went to the same dinner last year in the standing room only, and this year the place is only half full. So that was a disappointment, but, you know, obviously, the folks in Del Norte, this is a passion for them, and they get together and put it on, and they do a very nice job with it. We're always glad that we go.
Thank you for going.
The only things that go on, so there is a best of farmers initiative that's being organized now in order to find some grant money to assist veterans that want to come back to the San Luis Valley in particular, and use farming as a business or as therapeutic purposes, to be able to find them some grant money to purchase land or to equipment even. I guess they found out that Kuboto will actually donate a tractor if they have a veteran they need to meet some certain criteria, and they'll be able to donate a tractor to that veteran. So very infancy part of that process, but I think it's pretty crucial, and I think it's there, you know, I have a couple veterans that work that use that, and they both want it for therapeutic purposes and business, but to be able to facilitate that in a rural like community like this, I think is good. Also, the V A will be coming down to address some of the healthcare needs and mostly the choice program that we have going on here. So for those that aren't aware, the clinic here doesn't have a hospital, or I mean, I hired a doctor in the facilities here, so we are now on this called choice, which gives a veteran a card and allows a veteran to go to S O B Health, Valleywide, Rio Grande Hospital, wherever they choose to go, and the V A will pay, I think, around Medicare or Medicaid rates for that veteran to seek care at those facilities, and that way they don't have to go all the way to Denver. There's strengths to be able to do that, but they're gonna be addressing some of the needs and issues that have occurred with that, so if you are interested in going, that'll be the September 7th at the university at the evening time, but if you want to come and have some input, the actual V A staff member will be there, so if you have questions or want to ask them, you know, what's been going on, they're there to answer them, but I think progress-wise, it's a lot better than what it was three or four years ago. And just the budget hearing, I want to thank the department heads for doing such a really good job of not only presenting what you guys are doing well, but what your priorities are for this upcoming year, and being able to set that up and doing it in a professional manner, I think it's awesome, and we're gonna try to help you out as much as we can and see what we can do, but very well presented, everybody was professional, and I definitely appreciate that.
I would echo that, for example. Any questions? Thank you.
So the Upper Rio Grande Economic Development Coalition met last, well, it was last Tuesday a week ago, and unfortunately, I was unable to attend, you did that for the family. However, a little bit of the report that I got from our city manager, Boris Natterberg, he said that they're pursuing a, I always forget the term for the char?
Biochar.
Biochar, thank you. So they're pursuing some biochar, which they've been pursuing for a while, trying to get some franchises down into the valley and seeing if we can't utilize it. And it's an organic compound that is made out of the waste from forest fires and dead trees, and you spread it on your land, and it helps with a lot of retention and fertilizer retention, and it can potentially be a very good thing. The difficulty right now is overcoming the high cost of franchising it down here and the willingness of large businesses to travel the distance that it takes to come to the San Luis Valley. And so that has become a bit of an issue, but they're still looking into it at this point. We've got a busy September coming up, and this is a little bit early, but we will probably talk about it at the next city council meeting as well. The 12th of September, we have Azar Obadri, don't sit in the back of the room, she worked very closely with a lot of the business members in the city to develop an understanding of what they wanted to see as far as economic development here in the city of Montezuma. And one of the things that they, that overwhelmed when they came back on the survey was they wanted to know a little bit more about marketing. And so there's a marketing crash course on the 12th of September at four P M to five thirty P M, I believe is what it is, and they'll be doing that here?
Yes.
Yeah, they'll be doing that here, and then right after that, there's an economic development summit, and there will be some economic ideas thrown around and a conversation between the city council and the business owners as to what other things can be done to economically develop the city. So that's all I have.
Thank you.
Speaking of September, just for the people that are still here, on the 13th, so the night after the economic development meeting here at City Hall, our regularly scheduled city council work session is going to be our annual cities in town week celebration. We'll be having... We'll be having a little barbecue, and we invite the public to come down, and each department head will have some information about their departments and what they do. So if you would just please mark the calendar now for the thirteenth at five-thirty, come and get a hot dog over, hamburger, and we'll have some signup sheets, because as Mr. Martinez, Councilor Martinez, said, we are in dire need of committee members on all of our committees. So we can research through that as well.
I've got a question for you. Do you have to limit city limits to be upon those committees?
No, I don't think there is. It depends on future board.
On which one? Yeah, it depends on which one.
Yeah. Planning and zoning.
You're talking about planning and zoning, you do on planning and zoning.
You do have to be up there.
But not urban renewal or some of these other committees? Or the art scouts are?
Yeah, we have a tree board. We have a tree board, which has been about a year, year and a half ago. We instituted a public arts district, but we have not had any, expecting any, any members on that board at all. Theater board needs members, so.
And so it's meetings?
So it sounds like PNC is the only one that you would have to be a resident.
Okay, okay. And so all the boards, this picnic on the thirteenth is for all of them?
Yes.
Okay. And where is that again?
Here. It's here at City Hall. Maybe we can get a...
Just at the park?
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. It's at Chapman Park. Yeah, we wouldn't wanna be barbecuing hot dogs here at City Hall.
Well.
Sorry. Chapman Park, I'm sorry. Maybe we could get representatives from each of those boards to maybe explain what they're doing and what they're working on. And all of us each kinda have our boards that we serve on and sit on. It is, it's interesting and it's eye-opening and it makes you appreciate all the people in this community that volunteer, 'cause they go unrecognized and unnoticed, but we have, between the people who sign up to coach teams that are volunteering their time, serve on boards and committees, we really do have a very generous community.
Full weeds?
And full weeds, yes. The dirty dog and all this. And I know I can do that.
Is there something else we have a motion to go into executive session?
I move to go into executive session for a conference with the city attorney for the purpose of receiving legal advice on specifically legal questions under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two four B.
Second.
Any more discussion? Hey, Ronda?
Councilor Martinez?
Aye.
Councilor Schrader?
Aye.
Councilor Lawrence?
Aye.
Councilor Schleppa?
Aye.
Mayor Garcia?
Okay, so we'll take a five-minute reset.